Good morning and welcome to the July 25, 2023 meeting of regular meeting of the Board of Supervising of Calaveras County. It's eight AM and we will be going into closed session. Madam Clerk, can you please read closed session for us?
Pursuant to government code section five four nine five six dot nine D one conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. County of Calaveras versus Tascornia Ranches Limited partnership at all. Calaveras County Superior Court case number two zero C V four five one one three.
Thank you. Are there any public comments in the room on this item? See none. Are there any online?
There are no public comments online.
See no public comments. We will go to closed session and return at nine AM.
Thank you.
Good morning and welcome to the regular meeting of the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors for July 25, 2023. You can rise, please rise for the pledge to our flag.
Supervisor Stoffer, can you lead us?
Thank you, sir. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Someone called you out on calling me out.
All right, we'll read out, have the board clerk read out from our closed session.
Item number one pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1 Conference with Legal Counsel Regarding an Existing Litigation, County of Calaveras versus Tuscornia Ranches Limited Partnership at All, Calaveras County Superior Court Case Number 20CV45113. There was no reportable board action.
Thank you. We will move on to staff announcements. This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public. And I see Lisa is here and Lisa, you have several items to report out to us.
Just a few. Can I fix the microphone for Shorty here? Good morning Chair, respective board members, CEO Hitchcock and our County Council, Lisa Medina, Environmental Management Agency. We are very excited to announce that the Environmental Management Agency has implemented a new software program with the help and collaboration of our IT staff and our colleagues called a pop-up. So when you visit any of our five departments under the Environmental Management Agency, you will see a message pop up on your screen with important and relevant information. For example, our Animal Services Department Kitten and Cat Foster Program is in desperate need of human foster parents. When you go to Animal Services Department Adoption and Fostering Program, you will see a pop-up that shows some adorable kittens. Everybody can see that? This automatically pops up when you tap on the fostering program. We currently have 80 cats and kittens at our shelter and we are desperate and we're pleading with our community to go online and apply for a human foster program application. The applications are available online and they are fillable too online as well. We are reaching out to our community and invite everybody to apply for the foster program and we look forward to seeing our community do that. For our Air Pollution Control District, you will see a pop-up that you can click on to check your current air quality status. Like this, you click on the link and it will pop up and show your current air quality throughout Calaveras County. And this is broken down whether or not the AQIs, which are the air quality index, are the air quality is good, moderate, unhealthy for sensitive groups, unhealthy, very unhealthy, and hazardous. And so we typically in Calaveras County like to see good or moderate. We are very grateful for our IT department and our coworkers from other departments who have donated their time and collaboration and efforts to make this happen. Through this collaboration, we can better serve our community and help animals we are responsible for, not only as an agency but as a community. And that's all I have. If you don't have any questions.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Any other staff member have announcements in the room? Seeing none of any online?
There are none online.
All right, we'll move forward. To recognition and acknowledgements, this is a proclamation from the clerk of the Board of Supervisors to adopt a proclamation honoring Mary Ann Garamendi for her distinguished service in McCollum Hill in Calaveras County. And I will turn this over to Jack Garamendi.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And full disclosure, Mary Ann Garamendi is my aunt. Maybe not that common a name, so easy to disclose. And I'd like to welcome so much of the wisdom of McCollum Hill to be in the room to join us today. Thank you very much. It's my honor to make a proclamation today recognizing and honoring Mary Ann Garamendi for her distinguished service in McCollum Hill and Calaveras County. Mary Ann, why don't you come on up here and stand before the mass here?
Come on, Mary.
And we're going to have some public comment after I read this. Be ready to be roasted a little bit. So whereas Mary Ann Garamendi is a fourth generation resident of Chili Gulch in McCollum Hill, where she attended McCollum Hill Elementary and graduated from Calaveras High School in 1966. She followed her parents' footsteps and attended the University of Nevada Reno, later moving to Oklahoma where she raised four children. Mary Ann returned to Calaveras County in 1993 and began her life's work as a teacher in 1994 and retired from Mountain Oaks in 2018. And whereas Mary Ann passionately advocates for preserving our local history and educating children about it, starting California History Day in McCollum Hill in 1997. To this day, every year, over 300 fourth graders from throughout Calaveras County experience what life was like during the Gold Rush as a result. Additionally, as a member of the Calaveras Historical Society, she is instrumental in bringing hundreds of third graders from throughout the county to our museums in San Andreas where they learn about our local history and explore our historical resources. Mary Ann is also the current president in the McCollum Hill History Society and the past president and member emeritus on the McCollum Hill Historical Trust. And whereas Mary Ann is dedicated to environmental education through the Upper McCollum River Watershed Authority, she started this, she's through the upper McCollum River Watershed Authority, she started the stewardship through education program that serves as a bridge between schools and communities to learn about. Ms. Ladado, Ms. Brock, excuse me.
I'm Jennifer Ladado Brock and Mary Ann.
I'm Jennifer Ladato Brock and Mary Ann and I grew up together. Our families were always very, very close. But you left out some important details, like she was a head cheerleader at Calaveras High School. And she was on the championship, she was on the championship tennis team that beat Jackson after twenty years. We finally did it in nineteen sixty-five or sixty-four. So anyway.
The tennis team is here.
Many of her lifelong friends are here today and on behalf of all of our friends and our family and those who are with us and those who have blessed us, congratulations and thank you.
Thank you, Jen. Hi, I'm Kathy Borland. Some of you, I remember you Gary, from years and years ago. I wrote this for Mary Ann because I think it's very important that we honor our community members. You know, not when they're gone, but when they're here. It's really important for us to do that. And I don't think you understand the stuff that Mary Ann does and it's all for kids. And it doesn't matter where that kid lives. It doesn't matter who they are. She just does it for kids because she loves it. However, there are community members who will run the other way when they see her coming because they know she's got something going on up here that she wants to do and they're gonna be involved. And I've seen people literally go like this thinking, oh, God, she's got something going on. She's, she's innovative. She's, she's wonderful. She does this all out of the goodness of her heart. We are so blessed to have her in our community. And I have learned so much and I have been living on the ranch for three years and she drags me to everything that she does. And there's something going on every single month and it's all for kids. So we are very proud of her in our community. We voted her our grand marshal or like we like to say the queen of the McCollum Hill Parade. And we enjoy having her and I don't run from anything that she has going. So thank you all for honoring her. It's really wonderful.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Oh, Nancy?
Nancy Giddens, Calaveras County Librarian. I want to let you know that she doesn't only do historical things. She also does library things. And every time she brings the children to the museum, they come to the library to have their lunch. And she always has me come in and show the children everything that we have for children in our library. And we've signed up many, many children from Riverwood Flat, McCollum Hill. I don't know if you brought Mountain Oaks, but Valley Springs. We get to see these children every year and we have, oh, it's Mary Ann. Okay, the kids are coming. Clear out the Chesapeake Room, set up all the tables and let the kids eat there. So not only is she a supporter of the historical thing, she's also a supporter of the library and I appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. May I have motion, Stoppard?
Yeah, if I may say something first, sir.
For what?
Um, you know, as Kathy brought up, there are many times I'm one of those people that run the other way. Ms. Guaramendi walks into the room because she's on, you know, great heart. She's persistent. So strongly persistent. And you know, many times I'm like, look, that's just not the way the law works. We can't do that. And she stays on me until we find a way around that can get us to our objective and everything. You know, it's not so much that I'm pulling my hair out about figuring out the law, Mary Ann. It's because you do have the right things in your heart and everything you work towards for the community. They are good things, you know. I'm just lazy sometimes. I don't have to figure out the law and go to county council and bug it until we get our stuff done. So thank you very much for everything you do for the community. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
With that, I'll, I'll move it.
I will second.
We have a motion by Supervisor Stoppard, a second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Now, therefore be it resolved that the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors honors Mary Ann, Mary Ann's dedication to education service in our communities and congratulates her for being named Citizen of the Year in McCollum Hill, passed and adopted by the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors on this day, twenty-fifth of July, 2023. Mary Ann, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Dismissed the man of law commission with immediate stop.
He is persistent.
Yes.
All right, we will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is general public comments. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter and jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas today may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If the public comment is completed before thirty minutes allotted time period, board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. Are there any public comments in the room?
My name is Lou Bumpus. I live in Bound Ranch. I have a business in San Andreas. I have a few questions about the new garbage fees. Excuse me. Number one, is Cal Waste gonna pay for this increase as well? Are they gonna pay a new fee?
Sir, during public comment, it's a chance for you to voice your concerns.
Okay.
Okay, if you don't answer generally, you can send it to your supervisor and get.
No problem. No problem. Okay, so anyways, that's one of my concerns. And my other concern is, how many people sent that letter to you? My third concern is this, if we don't pay this, what are you gonna do? Because when we asked questions at this meeting, there were seventeen people present. I only know that because you made comments about it. There were seventeen people there and all of them asked questions about this and all of them were against this. And your department head said that we were paying this increase because it was good for the overall. But you had veterans there, retired veterans who said that they couldn't afford this increase. But it was good for the overall. That's communism. These were veterans. I'm a veteran. So how is it that you pledge allegiance to the flag which stands for democracy, but you vote for communism? And that's my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments in the room? Seeing none, we'll go to online.
There are no public comments online.
Public comments online. Okay. Seeing none, I will close public comments. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. Is there any board member wish to pull an item from consents?
Sure, I don't wish to pull one, but I, I wish to recuse myself from voting on item eight.
Item eight?
Yeah.
Recuse? Supervisor, over here. Okay, is there any staff member which pull an item from the consent? Is there any online?
There is none online.
Is there any public member wish to pull an item? No, online?
Not online, no.
Thank you, Robin. All right, I'll bring it back to the board. I'm open for a motion. Remember that Supervisor Heberti is recusing himself from item eights.
I move.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Fowler for second by Supervisor Guaramendi. All in favor? Aye, opposed, passes five zero. We move on to our regular agenda. I'll give a second for the room to clear. Pretty loud out there. All right, we move on to our regular agenda, item number sixteen. This is an action item from the clerk of the Board of Supervisors. The point members of Calaveras County Resource Conservation District will be filling two vacancies. So there any board member wish to make a suggestion on what's before us?
Barring any public comment that may change the mind, I would make a suggestion making John Osborne the ag industry representative and I would move that Sarah Hodgson be the member one for the vacancy of that, barring any public comment that would change the mind.
Any other board comments on that? Hearing none, we'll go with the public. Is there any public comments on this item? None in the room? Is there any online?
There is none online.
Thank you, Robin. So we have a motion by Supervisor Stoppard, a second by Supervisor Guaramendi.
Guaramendi, a second.
You'll second. All right, call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed, passes five zero. Move on to item number seventeen. This is agreement with humans, agreement. Human Resources authorized the board chair to execute a services contract with Evergreen Solutions in LLC and the amount not to exceed fifty-four thousand five hundred dollars should generate a classification and compensation study. Judy, you are here. It's up to you.
Yes, good morning Chair Tofanelli, members of the board, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Management Director. And I'm bringing before you today the agreement with Evergreen for a comprehensive classification and compensation study. We did an RFP, we put out an RFP in May. The RFP was open for a month. It closed June sixteenth. We only had one response to the RFP, which the cost was beyond what our budget was. And, and so we, I talked with my colleagues in human resources and got the top agencies that they have recently used for the studies and reached out to those agencies. Many of them I did not hear back from. Several said, sorry, we're too busy right now. And then I did have one that did respond and they are not able to start for about a year. And also they, the cost was, was quite high and beyond our budget. And so with working with our assistant CEO and our CEO, we decided to go ahead, meet, talk with Evergreen. Their references were really well. Right now they are working with Mariposa. And so a lot of the comparables that Mariposa has, we have. And so they believe they could to, they could complete this project in about six months. And so we have also made sure that information that they give us, we will be bringing to the board and make sure that everybody's on the same page as far as comparables and those type of items for the compensation study. Can I answer any questions?
Any board questions?
Yes, Supervisor Stoppard.
Evergreen, yeah, has been working with Mariposa and I can probably appreciate that most likely they're able to bring the price down based on the fact that they don't need to reciprocate a lot of the work that's already been done because they're a light county and they're being doing comparables like counties. But, you know, fast tracking down a six month um timeline is beneficial in certain ways, but what, what about a desk audit and getting all our different because, you know, this was part of the problem with working for in our last, last time is there's a lot of job descriptions and different seats throughout the county that aren't really up to snuff or comparable to other counties because they don't match, for one. Two, that they haven't been updated in certain areas for years so that they don't really explain what the job is. So moving forward on this and fast tracking on a six month timeline and not having that desk audit and everything else done, we're putting ourselves in a position where the comparables may not be right. And yeah, I, I just, that's, that's a question. I mean.
Right. So within the scope of work, the classification study and we have, I have discussed this with them in depth. And the classification is the first piece of this. So we will be, we have identified the areas that are of concern and they will be doing, they have a process for the questionnaire. Also in here, when we talk about the scope of work, they will be conducting interviews with the county administration office, human resources, department heads, supervisors and employees. And so the classification study is the first piece and they will be writing new job descriptions. And so that when we do the compensation piece, everything is very clean.
Providing that we approve it.
Correct.
Supervisor Guaramendi.
I'm sure this is self-evidence, but we will, we will consult with our labor unions as we go about this whole process.
Correct. And in fact, Nick talked with SEIU yesterday and after we have the contract approved, we will be sitting down and going over the scope of work with them.
Thank you.
Any other board comments? Is there any public comments? Seeing none in the room? Robin, do we have any online?
There is none online.
Public comments? Okay, we'll bring it back to the board. I'm open for a motion.
I'll, I'll move that we approved, approved this. I appreciate the answer on the, the classification and everything and how the work will proceed our actual compensation part. So thank you with that emotion.
A motion by Supervisor Stoppard.
A second.
A second by Supervisor Heberti. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes five zero. We're gonna take a break right now.
Thank you.
Set up for the next item. Set up for the next item. All right, we are back. We're on to item number eighteen. Excuse me, this is ordinance from planning, conduct a public hearing, authorize a notice of exemptions from SEQA and adopt an ordinance amending zoning, the zoning of a zero point nine eight acre portion of APN zero one zero zero two nine dash zero zero two from General Forest GF to General Agricultural A1. Angela Ramage authorized summary publication and a brief property description and map of the reclassified property. Madeline, you are up.
Good morning. Oh, that is loud. Madeline Flandreau, Planner Three, I am presenting project number twenty twenty-three dash zero one six zoning amendment for Angela Ramage. Okay, why are you not working? Come on now. There we go. So the applicant is requesting a zoning amendment of a point nine eight acre portion of APN zero one zero zero two nine zero zero two from General Forest to General Agriculture for consistency with the adjacent parcel in order to complete a lot line adjustment. The subject parcel circled here in red is located at seven nine zero eight Shad Road in Willseville, approximately five miles east of the intersection of Railroad Flat Road and Blue Mountain Road. The subject parcel is approximately four point two acres in size, currently developed with a single family residence that's served by an onsite septic system and domestic well. The southern portion of the parcel proposed to be merged with the adjacent parcel is devoid of any structures. So a lot line adjustment application was received by the surveyor in May of twenty twenty-two and is awaiting approval of this zoning amendment to complete the process. The adjustment would take a point nine eight acre portion of the subject parcel and add it to the adjacent parcel, which is zone general agriculture. If this portion is rezoned, the landowners can then adjust the boundary between the two parcels without any zoning conflicts. This is the general plan land use designation of the area. It is all resource production. That doesn't, that designation is suitable for ag operations and timber production and intended for parcels forty to two hundred and sixty acres in size. General Forest and General Agriculture are both compatible zones in the resource production land use designation, so the rezon would be consistent. This is the zoning of the area. I've put a star on the portion to be rezoned. This area of Willseville has a mix of zoning classifications, some large general forest parcels, some smaller parcels zone general agriculture, parcels owned by CR Pacific Industries that are zone timber production and some public service and recreational. Although general agriculture and general forest are resource zones, they're really intended for much different land uses. The general forest zone is intended for commercial timber production, whereas the general agriculture zone is intended for farming and ranching practices. While the parcel size will remain non-conforming, there's no new parcel that's being created here and no non-conforming use that's being expanded. This area of Shad Road contains parcels, obviously varying sizes, most of which are developed with single family residences and there are also larger parcels to the east owned by SPI, which are in timber production. The parcel is not located within any designated critical habitat for any protected species. And although there are some special status species within a five mile radius, the rezoning of an approximately point nine eight acre portion of the subject parcel in order to be merged with the adjacent parcel won't change the current, current primary residential use of either parcels and will have no effect on the species in the area. This application was routed for thirty days. We received no comments or concerns from the public or from county departments of public agencies. And this activity is covered by the common sense exemption that SEQA applies only to projects which have the potential for causing a significant effect on the environment. Rezoning the subject parcel from general forest to general agriculture will not result in more intensive permitted uses being allowed to occur due to the size of the parcel. The potential for residential development will not change as one single family residence and one accessory dwelling is already permitted per legal parcel of land in both the general forest and general agriculture zones and there's already residents on the parcel. Any agricultural uses will be very much limited due to the size of the small parcel and the elevation of this area. And the proposed zoning amendment was presented to the Planning Commission on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. During the public hearing, there were no comments from the public regarding the project and all five commissioners voted in approval, recommending that the board approve the zoning amendment, finding the project exempt from SEQA. So in conclusion, staff finds the proposed rezon to general agriculture is consistent with the resource production land use designation. And while the parcel size will remain non-conforming, no new parcel is being created and no non-conforming use is being expanded. The proposed zoning amendment is consistent with both the general plan and zoning code. The current residential use of the property is permitted in the general agriculture zone and the size of the parcel is really more beneficial to residential primary use of the land rather than a resource zone which is intended for commercial timber production and related uses. A simultaneous lot line adjustment is being processed to reflect the change in ownership of the rezoned portion of the parcel. And the zoning will be consistent throughout the parcel and with the adjacent general agricultural zone parcel. And the applicant is here if you have any questions for her.
Is there any question from board? This is the public hearing, so if the applicant would like to come up and say anything first, no, then I'll open it to the public. Public has a right to speak. Anything they have to say, is there any public member? Wish to say anything? Is there any member of the public online, Robin?
There is no member of the public online.
So we have no public comment and the applicant doesn't wish to speak, so I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. Is there any questions? I, I do have one question. I'm looking at the aerial map that you showed and the lot line seems to be going over buildings on another lot. Is that an issue? Because I know there's several things that are going on right now. I understand, but I'm asking if it's actual, if it's right, if it's over. It may be off, but. Okay. That one doesn't show it, okay. I'm, yeah, that's attached, yeah. Okay, all right, I just wanted to clarify that. All right, so I'll bring it back to the board again. Is there a motion?
So move.
A motion by Supervisor Garamendi, second.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stopper, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, passes five zero. Thank you all. Thank you, Madeline. All right, we're going to take another break. Just prepare for the next item, item number nineteen. All right, we're gonna take another break to prepare for the next item, item number nineteen. We're good, huh? All right, we are back for action item number nineteen. This is from building. To find and exempt from CEQA. Find an exemption for CEQA, introduce and waive the first reading of an ordinance amending chapter three point five three. Building Department Service Fees of the Calaveras County Code. And three, conduct a public hearing and four, authorize a summary of publication. Of the ordinance. So at this time, I've opened the public hearing and I will go to Doug.
Thank you, Chair members of the board, Doug Oliver, Chief Building Official. To bringing forward this ordinance, because we're kind of special in the sense that our fee structure is in ordinance, which means. Occasionally, as the the economy changes, we have to go back and. Reevaluate and then bring to your board a new ordinance to update our fees, be consistent. With the service models we have and the cost provide that services. So the presentation here will also add a couple of other factors that are in line with strategic plans. So I just want to kind of dive right into this and. And show you what we've got. So someone is kind of cover why we update fees. We have to ensure proper cost recovery. This is a enterprise fund. We're not general fund, so any of the services that we provide. We have to collect the necessary revenue to fund those services. We are specific to those services. We don't, and I'll get into a little bit further later on, but essentially every individual service, we're. Accomplishing the revenue recovery to maintain those services. We make sure that. Any of the services that have separate funding sources are not included in this type of fee structure. We also have to represent any. Adaptations we need to make in the workflow relative to new laws, new codes. If something comes down from the state. That affects the work we do, that affects the time it takes and that. Affects the the cost to provide that service. We also reflect any added services and you're going to see some added services and I'll explain a little later. We didn't, we weren't able in this ordinance to capture everything that was. Intended and I'll get into that a little further as it relates to the cannabis stuff we'll be bringing forward later. And we demonstrate transparency about the services provided in exchange for the fees that are collected. So I want to make sure that. That the public is aware and we're fully transparent on the cost to provide services. This isn't a situation where the fees fluctuate wildly. These are based on averages and standards that we've set for the quality of the services we provide. Other reasons, fire prevention program that your board has directed our department to move forward with is nearing completion. We have the. MOU draft to the the. The Fire District JPA, which we anticipate will be signed tomorrow and I'll be bringing that forward to your board for signature hopefully by August eighth. And that means that we will officially have a fire prevention program. And once again, we have to. Collect revenue to cover the cost of providing those services countywide. So this. This is one week ahead of everything else or two weeks ahead of everything else that's falling into place per your direction. And then there's also significant increases in the cost provide our current services at the same level. So I want to kind of get into those briefly. So targets for our department, we need to make sure these fees are easy to understand. They need to coincide with the services provided. We need to accurately reflect the work performed. And we need to base these fees on reasonable time and quality standards for every step of our process. And when compared against projected workload, we need to be able to inform the county as the necessary staffing levels each step of the process. We need to easily adjust at regular intervals based on the workload. We need also, essentially, we're saying we need to be transparent about what we're doing and the costs for what we're doing. The current building services need to be, the fees need to be updated because we have had increases in costs across the board. We have increased technology costs. We have increased. Costs due to salaries and benefits. We have a seven costs that have gone up and and. In the last three years, it starts to add up. Our purpose when we adopted this fee structure. Three years ago was to bring something to your board every three to five years to adjust. Because what we end up doing is. In the process of setting up our fees, there's always going to be annual increases of cost. And we want to set it up to where we can provide this service over a period of. Three to five years before we have to make significant changes. But nothing is going to cripple the, you know, cripple the system. We make incremental changes. But I didn't want to bring something to your board every year at every budget, which is. Is a legitimate business practice and other counties do do that, but. For for smaller rural communities, it just didn't seem to make a lot of sense to do that work every single year and bring back something. To your board tied directly to our budget every year. So we're still shooting on that three to five year mark. Fire prevention. There's a lot of stuff that that if the JPA and your board signs this MOU, there's a lot of stuff contained in state law. That everyone's doing at various levels statewide. We will be. Unifying nine districts into one program and we need to make sure that we're covering those costs. So. A lot of what this fee study is, is that fee structure, which is similar to other neighboring fee structures. Then code compliance, we are breaking them out separately so that we can demonstrate to your board that. You have separate costs relative to code compliance that in no way are mingled with. The rest of the services we provide and they are general funds, so I've provided you a separate breakout of of those cost recovery measures. And we'll, I'll mention briefly later about the the expectations on cost recovery, because I understand code compliance is really. Not a model that you expect to get full cost recovery on. It's just not a working model to to do that. If you're going to show compassionate flexibility, if your goal is compliance. Your goal shouldn't be full cost recovery in a code compliance model. So we'll get into that a little bit deeper later. So the line, the building department performs several service types. Essentially, the fees can't overlap. We can't double dip in any sense. No, we should not be recovering. The cost to provide services twice. We have to show that if. So for instance, code compliance, in no way can we charge a fee for code compliance on a building permit. Likewise, we shouldn't be charging. Any building related services on a code compliance case. So that breaks out also the amount of staff time. If you have one staff member that performs functions in both categories, we have to be able to split that out and say. Okay, half of the cost to provide that individual goes this way, the other half goes this way based on a time study. So what you're seeing here is that breakdown of of cost. And I just kind of covered it here. That's that additional slide. I'm beating my own slides, so bear with me. Okay, so the fees established in this ordinance can be modified by the level of cost recovery the board wishes the department to achieve. Right now, we're shooting for a hundred percent cost recovery. Because we're enterprise fund, we should be shooting for cost recovery and maintaining a certain amount of. Reserve fund because the services that we perform, they're not a constant. Inspections ramp up during the spring and summer, start tailing off in the fall. Traditionally, while plan review generally starts ramping up in the fall, travels through the winter so that. The contractors and builders have plans approved in the spring when the snow melts and they're ready to build. So our reserve fund is meant. To supplement in low times. And make sure we have staffing that was paid for under the permit. So if we go through plan review, we charge the fee, we issue the permit, but the inspections aren't done yet and revenue drops off. We want to make sure that we can. Put in enough revenue from reserves over the span of an economic cycle. To make sure we provide the services that the community paid for. So if if we move to a system where. We go to less than. A hundred percent recovery for building services or fire services for that matter. What you find is that we have to empty our reserves and ask for general fund money if there's ever a significant downturn. And that's something that we really don't want to be able to do. We want to be separate from the general fund and be able to maintain these services as a continent. Okay, so the, by establishing the fees and ordinance. We're basing them on actual performance measures and we are making it publicly available at all times without having to go searching. The problem we had prior to the first adoption of this ordinance was that it was founded in. By resolution. It's not. On our website, so to speak, people have to ask for it. We have to go digging for it. And if it sits there for ten fifteen years. You know, it gets lost to time. I prefer the opportunity to have it in ordinance where anyone can just look up the code section on MuniCode or online and find it. You know, so it's, it just seems like a better governmental transparency method to have it in ordinance, which is why we're continuing to do that. The fire prevention program, which is the bulk of the changes we have. Is envisioned to take. The duties that is, that are currently distributed to all nine fire districts, unify them and make sure that they're being reported in a unified manner to the state. Well, as it pertains to mandatory inspections. So you may recall a few years back, the Ghost Ship Fire. Cast a lot of light on mandatory inspections and proper enforcement. There are several. Significant occupancy types that require annual inspection. Some of them require every two years. And they're required now to be reported to the State Fire Marshal's Office. Those are currently being handled by individual fire districts along with the basic fire code, operational and construction permits. For fire safety and hazardous business uses like propane storage, hot work, welding, black, you know, I would say blacksmithing usually maybe two in the county, but. You get the idea in a flammable environment like our county. We need to make sure that sparks aren't being thrown in an unsafe location. The chemicals are being stored appropriately, that sort of thing. And so currently. As the fire chiefs are managing their budgets, we, they have a conundrum. When the money doesn't come in, the revenue doesn't come in. Do I staff the engine or do I staff fire prevention? It's always a balancing act. This way of unifying this gives them the opportunity to put the resources they need into the fire protection while we manage the fire prevention. And the the hope with this is that we have a far better. Opportunity to educate the public on fire prevention while they're able to enhance, maintain. The current fire attack programs that they have. But there is a cost. And so each of these service fees are based on. The estimated time required to do those services based on the the time studies that we've done. This assumes, of course, that the board supervisors will sign an agreement with the district JPA in two weeks. And. The assumptions are also reflected against the neighboring counties, which we'll get into in a second here. If we adopt this ordinance and your board does not sign the agreement. It doesn't, it doesn't invalidate the fees, it just. We don't collect them. They're there in case we come up with another schedule or another program that meets your needs. Those fees will be there because the time to do the work is still the same. So we're not, we're not in any way creating an issue by having a fee structure available. Ahead of the program. It's essentially we're front loading for success here. Okay, and then to accurately capture costs for code compliance. These fees that we're presenting to you for code compliance are based on case management of violations up to and through the citation period. It does not include the abatement cost because once again, we, we can't. Bill you for a projected cost, it's not going to be there. So consequently, we also can't charge you. For an abatement cost and then charge you again if we go out and do the work. And so we're not, there should be no way to overlap any fee in an individual service. The code compliance fees as they are assume that once we get to citation, here's the fee for carrying it through to us typing that citation and sending it. When the clock runs out on the citation and we have to decide to abate. That fee is separate. The rest of those abatement costs are tracked hourly and by the cost to provide services for a contractor for demolition, that sort of thing. And then that's paired out in an invoice to the the customer to show, here's what happened up to the citation. Here's what happened after the citation. So. Per your guidance in our last discussion over code compliance. We are moving forward with the the extension of time. With the, you know, the the understanding that the customer can say, I admit I have a violation. I need another three weeks. And we say, okay, we're going to give you that three weeks or we're going to give you four weeks, but we do need to pay. Those costs to maintain this case up to this point. So you have to pay the citation fee, but we're going to let you run without going to abatement. And we're going to let you, we're going to monitor your your compliance. So we are moving forward with that. This, well, I just. I threw myself off. I read the next line and I'd already said it, so I'm going to keep going. Okay, so where did we start in this? What we do is we looked at our previous two thousand and nineteen time motion studies compared it against the work we have now. To see what changes there are, make adjustments to the time as needed based on the new service models. Perform time motion studies on the fire prevention services. You may have noticed that we have. A current fire inspector. Who has been out there working with the fire districts. He has been doing these inspections. But he hasn't been doing them as the fire marshal or as the fire chief. He has been doing them as. As a county employee, figuring out exactly how long it's going to take in this county to do the work. Next to that fire district representative and giving the information to them to use moving forward. So at each step of the process. We've been working with the fire district when they've reported their information to the state. He's been. Working on those documents and and working on the uploads to the state. He's been doing the occupancy inspections with the fire marshals or fire chiefs. That are out there currently so that he had a good understanding of what it's going to take at each step. In each one of these, these job duties. So that's where we got the the basic time. In our workload analysis for the proposed fire fees, him actually going out there for the last six months. And doing the work side by side with the fire departments. And then we also. Performed, well. We applied the current cost to provide services. You'll notice that the the total value to recover cost in this analysis is higher than the previous. Because of the added staffing for fire prevention, also because of the increase in staffing costs as mentioned before. So we've also included in this a comparison of the fire district fees or the fire department fees in neighboring counties against what we're proposing on some of the more common. Inspection types. Some of the data that we use in this study is not necessarily a time motion study, but a basic standard of how we do services and how long they should take. We want to make sure that we don't overburden the system or drag things out or in any way show. Any perception that. Well, lack of a better term, we're not sandbagging the customer here. We have a time and quality standard. On many of our services and in the absence of data about how long it has taken in the past. If we know we're moving forward and we should be streamlining things and it's only supposed to take fifteen minutes. It's a management issue if it's coming in over fifteen minutes. I'm billing the customer for fifteen and if I have an issue with that, that's a training and management. Thing. So building inspections, you'll notice we have time standards on how long it should take fifteen minutes for a water heater. It should take ninety minutes for a sheer inspection on the average size home. Those are, those are part of the expectation of the employee when they're doing the work and that gives me a reasonable expectation of how many people I need. So. Plan review time standards are based on the current timeframes for the staffing that I have and what the code requires me to check. On those plans in order to approve it and get it out the door. And staffing hours based on specific services are generated by subtracting the total hours spent by the employee. On other tasks. So you got twenty eighty hours as a total for FTE. But for me to know how many people I need to do the job, I have to back out the things they're not present to do the job for. For instance. You've uh, we have to remove the hours spent in training. Because if if I'm including those hours, I don't, I have a bad picture of how many people I need. For instance, uh, also, uh, how much sick time? Do they have? How much vacation time? If they were, if I base. The amount of work on twenty eighty hours. And then they take all of that time, personal time and training time. I'm saying I need less people than I actually do. You know, if I say I can accomplish this with three inspectors and on any given period, I've got two of them out because they're at training or on vacation, I'm in trouble. So you've uh, the the slide, one of the slides further on will show how we take out those not enough. Or anything more than tracking how many people are necessary. What's removed from the study is staff time to undertake tasks that are through other funding sources. And the cost of performing uh, separately funded tasks such as vehicle abatement, that's a separate. Fund source. So the the work performed in that, that's taken out the the. The cost provided services taken out of this presentation and this fee structure. Um, in addition, any cannabis control. That's separate funding. That doesn't, that is not reflected in the totals that I've prevented that presented to you. So as mentioned before, here's our basic time standards and these are maintainable. We do have, uh, your board is aware that we've had some staffing challenges getting uh, trained inspectors. Uh, involved in the program. We do have new inspectors. They are being trained, but this is the standard. This is their expectation. Coming out of probation that they can meet these time standards and they're fully aware of that. And currently, these uh. These probationary inspectors are are doing one heck of a job. So I'm I'm pretty impressed with what we got right now. I saw no reason to change these standards whatsoever moving forward. Permit processing times have remained fairly constant because. In in response to increases in what we're required to look at in the code, we've also streamlined the program a bit. So we've taken things down to more automated functions. Um, and that has, that has caused these numbers to maintain fair uh. Overall, pretty steady. In our time review standards, these are, these are the estimated timeframes on average to perform. And and I will note to the board that uh, three years ago, when we brought this forward, this was the expectation. We weren't meeting this expectation. It was if we made changes. This is what we're going to build a customer and this is the the program we're gonna provide. At that time, we had about a twelve week turnaround. On plan review. We currently are at about five to six weeks. So we we have not quite hit. The total standard on amount of time to the. Uh, time to target on the 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 customer side. But we have cut that number down significantly. And with the staffing we have with additional training, we will be able to meet those standards and uh, hopefully within the next year consistently. So I'm very hopeful and staff's done a very good job of of streamlining and mastering their skills so that we can get those timeframes down. This is the the fee comparison that we did but with our neighboring counties based on the fire fees that we are proposing to your board. Uh, you'll notice that our our direct neighbors, we have, we have some differences in uh, in cost across the board here. Our direct neighbor, Tuolumne County, were pretty consistent with most of it as far as coming in under or very close. I will make a note that Tuolumne County uh, three weeks ago did adjust all of their fees up eleven percent. Um, we're we're still pretty. Pretty well in the ballpark there. Um, I will point out that there is uh, a noticeable increase in cost on schools. Uh, on our fee structure based on others. Uh, talking with the uh. The expert in the field, our our fire inspector is an a new tenant from Palo Alto, has thirty years of experience in fire prevention. Uh, in talking with him, the the big difference on that cost really is that in some of the larger jurisdictions. They don't charge the entire fee for the entire school. They have a fee for a component of the school and then they have a separate breakout, for instance, for the gymnasium, which is an assembly building. Which is a separate. Per uh, separate. Required mandated inspection. Rather than combine them, they separated out and say, here's your fee for the school and here's your fee for the the gymnasium. In addition. Um, the primary elements of the school being uh, important such as the fire alarm system. The 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 riser room and the sprinkler equipment, that sort of thing. Some jurisdictions. Focus on those elements. Our current. Fire prevention experts in our local districts, they look at. All of the fire safety items throughout a school in their districts. And so we're emulating their needs for what they expect as far as fire safety in schools, which may maybe. A higher standard than other counties and cities. Um. I if if uh, there's any concern over that fee, we can always modify it. Uh. Your board is is free to change any of these and we can do additional time studies on them as you see fit. Currently with the the fire districts and the schools that they're inspecting. Um, we're putting in at least two and a half hours of inspection. On those schools, not counting drive time, not counting re-inspections on items that we have found. Out there, which also prompts another hour to an hour and a half. Of re-inspect and drive time. The six fourteen uh. Seems appropriate to capture costs, but if your board determines that this is uh. Needs to be modified, we're free to make those changes. Okay, so we collected all the data and we threw them into our work time. Cost and revenue analysis spreadsheet or the analysis spreadsheet. Uh, it takes every bit of data and it throws it in there to tell us how many people we probably should have to balance out the workload. And based on that, what's our, what's the cost to provide the service? And then generates an hourly rate that we can apply to each of those permits based on the total amount of hours worked to provide that service. And uh, it does allow for some flexibility on individually, individual fee types. For instance, your board uh, has directed us to. Reduce and streamline ag permitting. And so we've included a separate fee for that where we have streamlined the program. Remove the plan review fee from from that. You'll see that as a lower fee for streamlined permits in that in that regard. And what's gonna, these are recommendations. This is what we are recommending in order to balance our budget heading into final budget. Uh, this is recommendations in order to maintain the staffing levels that are giving us the successes we have on. The ability to provide inspections within twenty-four hours to reduce the plan review time and the wait time for customers. And to to, in in addition, innovate. Uh, maintain and enhance our current technology and and improve the streamlining moving forward. Improve online uh, access to the customers. Uh, in fact, um, and and in addition. In downturn, when you are using your reserve funds, you have to be able to replenish those. And so we have to budget to replenish those in in good years. This this entire program. Um. Functions based on the recommendations here, but your board may decide a any or all of these fees may be adjusted. And then we would compensate, we would go back and look at, look at the bottom line and make any adjustments as needed. And with that. Is there any questions?
Supervisor Stopper, you had questions?
Thank you.
You brought it heavy.
Yes, I was just curious, how do you factor in travel time? I didn't see sort of a separate line item for that. How do you factor that in?
So uh, we did an initial fee study where every inspector and every code compliance officer tracked their routes. And how much time it took to drive to each location within a route, not necessarily, and definitely not. From the office to each separate location, they all planned a route. And then we averaged the time. On every one of those routes between targets to get a basic amount of time per stop. So so it worked out that code compliance was about seventeen minutes. If you plan a route of the eight stops. You know, it may be. And based on our basic time, uh, uh, basic process of go to your furthest site first. Work your way back to the office so that the end of the day, you got a short trip back. You may end up with, you know, an hour long trip to the first stop, but every other stop is five or ten minutes to get to the next stop. So the same same process for the building inspectors and we averaged them out. About seven, I believe it was about seventeen minutes for drive for code compliance, about fourteen and a half. Fifteen minutes for a building inspector to plan their route and execute that.
Thank you.
That it? Supervisor Stopper?
Um, so cost recovery. Not general fund department. So even without tracking your time of driving back and forth, there's office time that's done to. On certain things that don't apply to specifically a permit, but overall. The processing of permits in general, like. Certain days of the week when you're doing training. And that that's, that cost has to get spread over all this because it they're training to be able to facilitate the permits, correct?
Correct.
But during that time, is the building apartment completely closed down?
Negative.
Never. So there's always someone at the desk to be able to respond to certain things. During a raining day.
Correct. Well, okay, Wednesdays from noon to four, we have staff training and and uh. Process training. We have a lot of new staff members and we're currently maintaining that downtime. We do, we do schedule appointments during that time. And the building inspectors are out in the field doing their inspections during that time. Building inspectors have a separate training schedule that that keeps them out, you know, being able to go out and do the inspections, but the front counter does shut down except for. Uh, appointments. On Wednesdays.
Right. But someone coming in to get a business license isn't able to make it to the counter because they don't know it's shut down. Because they're sent from one office to the other when they're signing up for a. Business licenses.
Correct. However, if your if your board wishes. I can end that program.
I I, I'm not wanting you to end the training program. What I'm, what I'm saying is scheduling. You don't need to have every person. In the training program, you might have one person that's already trained in a certain area. You know, depending on, you know, overall. How many new people we have at what say the front desk during that time. But you have someone that may be trained in a certain area that you could have. Work the front desk and be able to facilitate the small things during that time. So you have someone there to answer. I mean, this isn't just the building department. This happens in other departments. Um, you know, overall. It's, you know, we as a county are open during the week. And this part of the process, I get complaints from people all the time going to different departments that close down for either a day or part of a day. For training purposes, when there's the ability to be able to function one person or another to the front desk. To at least take a note. So then they have a face when the public's in during business hours. And I think, you know. This goes, this goes not directly to this. But that's something that's brought up consistently. And I think that with many of the departments, it's become a real problem with a lot of people in the county.
I'm I'm.
And the training is crucial, you know, and I do get that.
Hmm.
You know.
I, and this is, this is. This can be worked out. I mean, this has been a a three-year process of 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 this standard being in place because we had so much we had to do to get. Modernized that it was necessary to do that. I'm happy to, if your board wishes, I'm happy to. Retool how we provide training to our staff and keep, keep the doors open for that four hour period. I would recommend that at least once a month. That we have some downtime to put, you know, coordinate with other departments, for instance. And, you know, pull everybody together for critical items. But um, I I I do concur with you that, yeah, that is a problem and and I I hear complaints because we're not the only county that does this. So and and I hear complaints from our neighboring counties too that are closed two days a week, solid. Um, it it's not good, it's not ideal customer service to not have access. For any period of time during normal business hours. So I I I understand your frustration.
And and it's a tough jungle, be and and you're absolutely right about being able to coordinate with other departments and having everybody in on a conversation that's gonna be. Had once, you know, I mean, that's kind of crucial. But you know, for example. Someone from Contra Costa County, uh, that's starting up a business up here, there's, they're building their home at the same time. They drive all the way up here on a day in the middle of the week when we have our business hours open. And they're here during that amount of time and they go to file their paperwork and they're told, hey, sorry. This department or this department's closed, you'll have to come back on a day when they're open. In the middle of the week and they just drove three hours or two hours.
I've I've already got a process in my mind. I can end that right now if you're bored with it. It's for me to change this. I'm 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 happy to make the adjustments.
I'm over, I'm over beating the dead horse at this this point about the issue. So I get it and I I appreciate you being that. So I'll get back to. The fees.
Very good.
You know, I'm glad you explained the school fee and what, you know, that was something that really popped out to me. Um, you know, but you also have a fee here for assemblies and you said that that kind of with the schools that kind of gets enveloped into. The Calaveras County one because it's done at all at once.
Right.
You know, um, so they don't, you know, you got two se- two hundred and seventy, let me get my glasses on, two hundred and seventy-one dollars for assemblies. Is enveloped in that six hundred and fourteen.
Correct.
Okay. And then some of these are uh, like the double dot for Amory County means the hour average. Or the per hour charge. So that could develop into something, you know, how mu- depending on how much time they spend there and how many issues there are.
Yeah, it could.
Could be exponentially more or just slightly less. But okay, I get that. But you know, when it comes to our schools and everything. Safety is first, so I can appreciate the amount of time our fire department spend with you and. Our our fire marshal and everyone else to get, to get those as safe as possible. But at the same time. Every time we can help out our schools because. Honestly, the dollar doesn't stretch far enough for education in my opinion these days and they are trying to get things up to par. They're all behind on infrastructure and, you know, maintenance for these schools. Uh, I personally am one that's willing to consider. You know. Working with the schools to be able to get more dollars that goes towards education as for, as opposed to the cost of infrastructure going in.
And and this appears to be a good candidate for that. I mean, your your board had directed to make modifications to the water heater permit feeder, keep that at a at a. A a lower fee than what we'd normally charge on a on an over the counter permit to encourage people to comply for fire prevention reasons. This is another good candidate for your board if you you wish to. Uh, essentially, for lack of a better term, subsidize it and say, lower that fee to something is similar to what we're seeing and. Perhaps lowering it to maybe plaster counties just to make sure we recover some cost. So.
And and over and overall, I don't see this part, I mean. Putting a huge dent in the, or minimum.
We only have six.
Yeah, there's only. Yeah.
Agreed.
I I mean, on average per year, there's only six permits or whatever going through. So, I mean, overall. This wouldn't be a huge lift by the board. You know, in helping out when it comes to fees. That's just one of the things. I mean, I could go through everything else, but it's like these numbers on the lower pages. Takes time.
Agreed.
You're the one that did the work. I can appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Supervisor Garmenti.
Thank you. Um, I agree with Ben's point about the schools. I mean, it's not a heavy lift for us and it carries some symbolic weight as well. Supporting education. So if you want to sharpen a pencil on that, I think that's a good idea, Supervisor Stopper. Um, we have a, you know, one of the board priorities is create more housing in our county. And we we all talk about that all the time. Is this going to, will this help that process? This this new fee structure, do you think it will? Make it better or slow it down? Since that's one of our priorities, I just want to see how it aligns with their goals.
I I don't underst- well, I don't anticipate. It doing any harm or good. Uh, building permit fees are the, some of the lowest fees. That are part of the package of developing a home on a parcel. Um, you you're gonna spend. Around fifteen thousand dollars in school fees and. Uh, road improvement fees and other development fees and and the the four thousand. For a building permit is is a small portion of that. Um, and and compared to neighboring counties where there's a lot of home development. Generally, that the the cost provided services is also significantly higher because of the. The the wages and benefits in those regions, which is why I keep losing building inspectors. They 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 want to work for a place with higher pay, but that means their permit fees are higher. So our our region is still comparatively lower on the permit fees. And we're still able to provide uh, equivalent or better service. And that's not to say that we uh. We aren't continuing to move forward to streamline and make the service move faster. Our recognition is that we understand that the the fee is gonna go up, but what can we provide to make it easier, such as a pre-approved plan? Program that your board has green lighted that we are, we're nearing completion on. Um, that's gonna remove the plan review fee and and that that's gonna be. You know, noticeable, that's gonna encourage people to want to comply, uh, come in and get the permit, especially. That's gonna encourage people to want to comply, uh, come in and get the permit, especially where we're doing uh building out areas. For instance, the Butz Scar, Butz Fire Scar. Um, the the reduced fee for ag buildings because we streamline that program. So um I don't anticipate this, that this particular fee study is going to do any harm or good. What does do good is giving the customer better service in response for this.
I would go to the the reduction in time and the time use analysis.
Correct.
Earlier in this. Thank you very much.
Any other board questions?
I do. Um, going off to what Jack just said, um, I am a little worried about the fee schedule and including more workforce housing. Um, a lot of the development that that is happening in District Four um happened because of reduction of building fees to enhance, enhance workforce housing. So if the time to meet the um housing requirement for the state. And so I I'm supportive of what you are doing. But as we move forward, we're trying to bring more housing into the county, I would like to see some more um options that would encourage, um, and I don't mean one offs, I mean like bulk housing developments to help um cater to those demographics that we're required to meet with the state of California and help and help with the developers wanting to do that rather than, you know, the custom home buildings and things like that.
But you you you're you're speaking right to the core of the discussion that the Housing Resources Committee is is having currently. Uh, if it makes you feel better in those meetings, the the developers and and program managers in those discussions have made it clear that the building permit fee is not the issue. It's the ability to mobilize quickly, find uh the appropriate lots and be able to get a permit processed quickly. Um, is that's, that's what's driving the cost. So like the i- in pre, in any, in any development where you have to go through the entire process of subdivision, that is a huge cost. We're focusing our sights now on being able to showcase lots and areas that are already developed that you can easily just come in and get building permits for that are already zoned, already approved. They just need, they just need the permits in hand and then give them a, 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 a a program that lets them master plan quickly and get started. And there's also legislation coming down the pike supposed to be helping as well. So I'll keep your board informed on that. But you're, you're you're right on target with what we're trying to accomplish.
Okay, thank you. That makes me feel better.
May may I follow up on that? Because um, you know, a- any uh in any type of development that's going in where there would be workforce housing. So exactly what Doug said, plus having that pre-developed area, which means having the proper infrastructure in for water, sewer and everything else, which is, which is our major hurdle throughout the county. You know, we can talk all day about someone wanting to invest into the county, but we don't have those major parts of infrastructure. That it's a full, full stop for all, for everything going forward. With that, if we have the ability, even if these fees are set up as they are, to do a development agreement on a specific project where if they're gonna put in workforce housing, we could decide as a board that, look, you're putting in this much workforce housing. We support that. You're making our numbers look, work better for the state, for the county. And we can reduce this amount of the permit fees on this project because you're helping the county out at the same time. Is that not correct?
Absolutely.
So we can do development agreements and be able to do that separately from this fee structure at the same time.
Whenever there's a workforce housing opportunity, uh such as, let's say Habitat, uh for humanity is a good example. They'll buy a small subdivision and they'll get the everything in place and they'll come forward and say, okay, this is all gonna be workforce housing. We want a reduction or waiver of building permit fees and then I would bring that to your board. If it's already, if if it's a development in process through the planning department, it could be part of a development agreement. So there's, there's many different ways to handle that scenario and and, you know, you're your will, my hands. If you're directing me to do that, then I'm bringing this to you.
There are tools in place, yes.
Are there any other questions?
Um, I do have a couple of questions. Um, and just on that line, um, permit fee for multifamily or one or two family residents is going up a thousand dollars. According to this, from three thousand nine or sixty-six, four thousand nine or seventy-four. So there's a significant increase for one and two family home. I'm looking at the very last part where you have the fee, the old fees and the new fee.
Let me, let me look it up here.
Item number seven. One and two family residence.
There we go.
On page.
Item, okay, I got it right here. Thank you.
So that's significant increase whether, you know, if I own a lot and I want to build a home on it, whether it's working force and workforce or not workforce. Still, the the amount has gone up quite sig- significantly.
Correct.
Twenty-five percent at least.
What we're looking at is when you have a, an hourly rate that goes up a percentage. If you have the same amount of time, but you increase the hourly rate by twenty dollars applied to, you know, twenty hours, it it ends up being significant. But that's not, that's not to say that. And then this is what we see in most cases when you have a subdivision that's going in. They do, they do the master plan and cut that in half. They they spend that fee once. They put that plan on file and then every permit thereafter is half the cost. Uh, going, going back to the item. Where is it here?
But but if I, if I, I'm a contractor and and I have a couple lots and I want to build a home and sell that. And it's a workforce home, I'm still paying an increased fee here versus a, a a contractor or developer that's gonna buy a huge lot of land and put in a number of homes. Um, and I'm just pointing it out. So there's some dissimilaries here that could happen. And significant increase just in that multifamily residence, which would be condos or apartment houses, is going up two thousand dollars. And I'm not saying it doesn't reflect what time it takes you to go through those plans. Obviously, you've done the research and you guys done the analysis on it. That's a cost increase on it. Um. But it is significant.
It it is. I I agree.
Yeah, so. Um, the other thing I have, question I have is um on the inspection fees, does that cover all costs as far as fuel vehicles, maintenance of vehicles?
Yes.
So that's included. You got ran that analysis on, on the fuel and everything else.
By by uh establishing the entire cost to provide these services, we are rolling in the, the, the amount of power it takes to keep the lights on, the computers running, uh, every, every pencil, every piece of paper. It's, it's the entire program for these particular services. That's what's collected as far as the, the cost of providing service.
So the hour, so it wasn't just hourly wages, it was everything was I want to make sure that that we're, because we didn't talk, it wasn't brought up, but I want to make sure that, that everybody understands that those reflect those added costs.
I I'm not an inspector on that list. But I am a cost to maintain this system and and keep things so, so my everything that goes into me and my computer and my vehicle and my gas is distributed across all these fees as well.
All right. All right, this is a public hearing, so I will open it up to public. Is there any public comments on this item? Mr. Segalia.
Well, Segala, taxpayer association. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this. And I'm really amazed at the amount of work you've done. It's incredible. Uh, I think the bottom line um, on, on housing expense, uh, it doesn't make much difference whether it's uh workforce housing or low income housing or or housing itself. It all relates to the cost of a, a building. And one aspect is availability of land. This mean enough land with appropriate zoning to be able to um to build on. Another thing that's involved is, are we using the latest technology and keep our costs lower? Um, one example could be, uh, uh, we're now requiring residential homes to have commercial fire extinguishers, which are very expensive. I don't know what percentage more that a builder will pay to put that, put that in. But I got a suspicion it's pretty high. There is an alternative that's being used successfully. It's a Halon type uh fire extinguisher. They use it in airplanes or in places where they have computers where water damage would be tremendous if they had commercial fire extinguishers. And the Halon is also safe uh for human beings. You can breathe in, it won't, it won't hurt you. And so one thing that could be done along the lines that you're already doing is uh do a little bit of study uh on technology. And to look at the uh, all the things that's involved with the, with the housing, so supply of land, a complexity of the building pro- building uh permit process, is it too complex? Do we need all that complexity? And a lot of this comes from the state, but that's okay. We can, we can lobby the state to try to bring more common sense into these regulations because these regulations are hurting our market, hurting our housing market. And there's no reason why we, uh, our elected representatives can't stand up for for the, for the people and their property rights and do what's necessary in lobbying with the state and or even federal government to try to get more common sense into it. Oh, anyway, there is bright side and perhaps studying technology could be part of it. Thank you.
Yeah, is there any other public comments in the room? See none or is there, Robin, we have any online?
There is none online.
So um, no further public comment, I will close the public hearing and I will bring it back to the board. Is there any further discussion on this item from board members? If not, I'm open for a motion.
So moved with the consideration of uh, you know, working with the schools on the um, on, on the cost for, for their, for their permit.
In, in order to move this forward, um, I would recommend that your board direct me as to a reasonable price for this fee so that I can bring you the ordinance with that fee in place.
Okay, so let me reel back my motion to start with and we should probably have that discussion and whether there's appetite by the rest of the board to move in that direction.
Is that correct, counsel?
Um, yes, because this is an ordinance and this is the introduction and the first reading, we would just want something specific for what comes back.
Okay. Since, since that's happening and we're gonna have that discussion, do I need to reopen the public hearing? Or any public comments on anything that we're discussing?
Um, I don't know that you need to. I mean, you can certainly see if there's any public comment on that before the board takes it out.
Us, you know, um, with the, he said about six a year. Want to waive it a hundred percent. So it's only gonna be like a thirty-six hundred dollar loss overall uh from the county. Maybe four thousand dollar loss overall.
I could also recommend that maybe we just make it hourly rate. The easier we, they are to get inspected, the less they have to pay, the more compliance they are, the less time we have to spend. It might be an incentive to, you know, work with us to make sure things are dialed when we get there.
Overall, four thousand dollar cost.
I I think supervisor Stopper might be onto something. It's about safety for our kids, school. I'll go with you on that, Ben.
Wow. We would have to find a public benefit on that one.
Yeah, I'm, I just want to make sure it's clear. So the, the proposal is to waive the, the school, the fees for the schools altogether.
I mean, we're, we're, my, it's a slip, I'm not
It's not.
Not against it, but you know, when we start doing that, so we include in private schools, public, I mean, we've got multiple.
It would be any school that we're performing mandated inspections on.
Education overall is a benefit.
That's absolutely a policy call that the board can make. I agree, um, with a public benefit finding, which it can make, I just want to make sure it's clear.
For, for future, yes. Simple as that. I find a public benefit in it.
This is just for the fire. Not any future building.
Right, just the fire prevention fee for school inspections.
Yeah.
I'll entertain it to be brought back for consideration.
Well, the disorderness, once it's written, it's gonna come back to us anyway.
Right.
And then it takes thirty days, a second reading goes thirty days. So um, I'm fine with it.
Okay. Thank you.
It's, there any public comment on that? There any online?
There is none online, no.
Okay, back to the board.
I would say, just sorry, one small clarification. You're absolutely correct. Supervisor Toffenelli, it comes back for a second reading and adoption. And then it's actually sixty days on this type of ordinance before it takes back.
So, uh, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll make the motion based on that one amendment on the fire, on the fire fee for the uh schools to be at zero.
Inspection.
Fire inspection.
And that's annually. A motion by supervisor Stopper, second by Hubbard, all in favor?
I.
Pose, passes five zero.
Thank you.
We'll give it a couple minutes for Doug. And we'll come back for supervisor announcements. Item on our, sorry. Okay, we are back for a final item on our agenda today. It's supervisor announcements and compliance with government code five, three, two, three, two point three D. Board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out. Start with supervisor Stopper.
Thank you, supervisor Toffenelli. Um, I, I, I will reserve for next meeting any reporting out I have. Uh, but I would like the board to entertain a statement by the board as a whole on any anti-semitic or hate rhetoric going around that we do not support those type of things that we want to keep a positive uh message for our community as a whole. That's all inclusive.
I, I think the possibility is that we should have, bring something back, have maybe county council uh prepare something for us and we can have a discussion, bring it back at our next board meeting.
I can absolutely work with the CEO on that.
Can you do? Theresa and you can work on something.
I would appreciate that.
Yes, we're happy to bring back a statement from the board.
Okay. We will look for that at our next meetings, which is August eighth. Hey, supervisor Follendorf.
Um.
Miss Bahama.
The only announcement I have is to find you, um, asked to let, ask me to let the board know that they will be having an annual dinner August twentieth um at Bay Station and we're all invited.
Supervisor Garmenti.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Uh, I want to thank supervisor Stopper and Chair for entertaining the opportunity to bring back a statement. Um, condemning hate speech and promoting good speech. And thank you for taking that on. So thank you guys very much. Um, yeah, um, Gorse Connect Authority.
Um, yeah, um, Gotta Say Connect Authority is really getting cooking. We're getting down, we're getting our, our detailed maps together. Uh, we will present to this board in August, uh, about sort of how these polygons and. I'm sorry, I'm talking inside shop here. How we're designing these programs around Calaveras County. This is a big initiative statewide, so. I will probably be, or staff will be working with each of you to make sure that you understand sort of how this process is developing in our county. How it will impact your individual districts as it goes along. So, uh, with that, Mr. Chair, I have nothing else to report, but thank you both very much.
You're welcome. Supervisor Hubbard D.
I would also like to say thank you, supervisor Stopper. Uh, I know both of our districts have been, um, uh, targets of that type of hate. And there is no room for that in our communities. Um, I'd also like to say that I attended, uh, as an alternate for Chair Toffenelli, the Calaveras Public Power Agency meeting on Wednesday, the nineteenth. I also attended yesterday, the twenty-fourth, the Central Sierra Child Support Agency meeting. Um, just to let everybody know that August is child support month. Um, I also attended the Homecoming in the Park, Murphy's Homecoming in the Park and was thrown in the Murphy's pokey. I had one person who tried to bail me out a little bit and I ended up having to bail myself out. So. Uh, yeah, that was really successful. Um, also just saying that I went to the opening of the Bear Valley Music Festival and the Hank Williams Concert last weekend, uh, in Murphy's. And it's just amazing that we have this type of talent and things that go on in our community and just really top notch. So thank you.
Thank you, supervisor Hubbard D. And yes, I appreciate you attending. For me, I was out of town. And, um, yesterday I was traveling, so I wasn't able to make the CP, uh, the, uh, child support agency. So, um, other than that, I have nothing else to announce. CEO Theresa H.
I have nothing to announce at this time.
Sarah, county council? No, you're good. Robin?